Good evening. And welcome to the Information Informed Candidate Forum. I'm Chuck Dunkle, and I also go by Mr. D., Mr. Dunkle, whatever, but Chuck's good enough. So I'm going to try to put this together so you have a chance to visit or ask questions of the candidates. We will go through Ward Two first, then we'll have Ward One and Three if they are running on post right now. If there are any of them show up, we have one. And then after that, then we'll go through the candidates, the mayor candidates, and then after all of them get up and give information about themselves and why they're running in that, and then we will ask for questions from the floor. And they are limited to five minutes apiece, and your questions will be limited to five minutes. And the first thing we're going to do is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance unified of the United States of America unto the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, yes, it is still on. I think I gave you all the instruction, Matt. Just have one comment. And Dad always said that if you're running for a political office, you know something. That was my dad's philosophy. We'll leave it there. So we'll go ahead and start over here on the Ward Two. And Anthony?
We're going alphabetical. Fantastic. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. No problem. I just want to thank the City Council for putting this on for us. I'm Anthony Beise. I grew up in this town, was raised here, went to high school here, moved away for a while and came back. The reason why I did this was there was things when I moved back that I didn't necessarily like, I didn't necessarily agree with, or I didn't understand. I don't go to City Council meetings, but I watch them virtually. I work in Ordway. I've been in Corrections for 12 years now. A lot of structure and a lot of basis on that is what I want to take into this. I am part of our Employee Council there and our Offender Council, so on a daily basis I deal with 200 employees and 1,100 inmates. There's a lot of unruliness that goes there that translates into what we do. My whole purpose here is to not necessarily come in and change the world. That's not going to happen. This is a community group, and I want to build on that. My goal, if I'm voted in, is to ask questions. I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions: why, where, when, what, how. There's certain things I would like to target that I'm sure a lot of us would. That involves our streets, our code enforcement, and a couple other topics that people have brought to me. Like I said, I'm not here to change the world. I'm just here to figure out the right way for us to go about as a group, making things better for everybody. With that said, does anybody have any questions for me specifically?
Nope.
Questions later.
Questions later? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just say your last name?
B-E-I-S-E.
Buffalo.
All right. Andrew, you want to get up, please?
Introduce yourself.
My name is Andrew Montoya. Very similar to Anthony. I grew up here. I was raised here, graduated from Los Angeles High School, and then I moved away for a couple years. I've been back for six years. In the six years that I have been here, we've opened seven businesses, five of them in Los Angeles City Limits. Four of them, my personal businesses, but other businesses in Los Angeles we've brought here. My dad was part of the group that brought recreational marijuana to Los Angeles. I just took my seat on City Council for Mr. Armstrong. I felt like I was just stepping in for Mr. Armstrong. He just does a great job at representing Los Angeles. I just wanted to do a good job for him. Honestly, if I knew there was this much interest in Ward Two, I knew there's two seats, but I probably wouldn't have ran again. I felt like I was just stepping in for Mr. Armstrong, but I think I've done a decent job, and I think I've done a decent job for the community of Los Angeles. I've put on five softball tournaments in the six years I've been here and brought five different businesses here. That's 39 different employees, and most of them have healthcare benefits, so that's what we brought to Los Angeles, so that's why I said, "Anthony."
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Lynette?
I wrote some stuff down, so I won't forget. So my name's Lynette Love. I moved to Los Angeles three years ago. I am not from Los Angeles, but I completely fell in love with our city and our community. And now I'm a homeowner, and I have a great job supporting the veterans at the VFW Post 2411. You can't understand me? Sorry. My name's Lynette. I'm a member of the Bend County Art Guild, the Women Civic Club, the VFW Auxiliary, and the Historical Society. I've been on the Public Works Board since 2020. Then I was elected two years ago to serve on City Council, Ward Two. I am also the chairperson of the Public Works Board and the Special Use Permit Committee for the last two years. I helped create the TAC Committee three years ago. The TAC Committee is a Tourism, Arts, and Cultural Development Committee, and we've done many things through the community. We did a community gathering. We do the Santa's Village at Christmas time, the Day of the Dead art show, and many more community activities. I volunteered for two years on Paint and Connect and helped run the student house and worked with the students painting and scraping and fixing up houses. And I also did the first Los Angeles Ward cleanup, which was last Saturday. It turned out great. I also want to take a second to thank everybody that came out and volunteered for making it a success. Before I was elected to City Council, I pushed to get trash cans downtown. We now have trash cans downtown. I pushed to get dog stations at the parks, and now we have poop bags at the parks. I also bothered the city constantly about updating and organizing our municipal codes and our ordinances so that the community could have a better understanding of what everything is. Most of our codes, unfortunately, were written in the late '60s, so I would like to continue working towards updating those and making it better for everybody, bringing our codes into the current times. Our community has more than a handful of complex problems, and there's lots of different ways to look at it and get to it, including the loose dogs, the housing, drugs, transparency or the lack of transparency, our streets and alleys, planning and zoning. I could go on forever, but we're only supposed to talk for a certain amount of time tonight, so. I'm pragmatic, optimistic, confident, curious, attention-oriented, persistent, and decisive, which makes me a good problem solver, and I think Los Angeles definitely needs more problem solvers. And so I'm honored to serve the last two years for the City Council, Ward Two, and our community, and I just hope to continue doing that. This is my forever home, and I want to do everything I can for our community to make our community better. So that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Medina?
It's already on. I'm Maria Medina. I'm running for the City Council. I lived in Los Angeles for many, many years, since I was, what, in kindergarten. So I served in the school board for 12 years. I was the first supervisor for Bend County for Experimental Head Start. I volunteer a lot at the nursing home. I also served as an election judge since I was 18 and they started mailing out the ballots. So I volunteered, you know, for winterization. I go do elderly people windows and stuff like that. So in that way, you know, I'm giving back to the community in assisting in that way. So that's just about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Tammy Richard. I've lived in Los Angeles this time for 14 years. The current house, we've been 12. I've worked several businesses in the area. I currently work from home, so I don't go out as much as I used to, but I get involved. I am on the Public Works Board now. I watch City Council from home all the time, and I just want to see some things that aren't happening start happening around here. We need some more businesses in the town, so we don't drive to Lahuna and Lamar for food. We need stuff like that around, and I just want to help. I know it's not going to happen right away, but I want to see what we can do to make it happen and just make a better community for all of us. That's about it.
Thank you. Rocky, would you like to say something?
I was sent here in 1980 by the U.S. military as an advisor to the 947th Medical Company that was a National Guard unit here. I stayed here from 1980 to the present. Oh, let me inter... I'm Akeleo, AKA Rocky, and it's Quintanilla. I'm sure everybody's heard of Salina, so it's pronounced the same way. I was... After I got out of the military, I went to work at Fort Lyon as a telephone operator. And from there, I moved into the fire department, and I retired from the fire department with 32 years of service. I was also a reserve deputy in Bend County for 19 years. I worked a jail. I was on the road. I worked at the state park for one year as a park ranger. And as a hobby, I volunteered at the McClave Five Loes Pantry twice a month, the first Wednesday of the month and the third Wednesday of the month. Other than that, I grew up in Michigan, and by way of California, I ended up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Okay, next we're going to have information from the mayor candidates, and we'll start off with Ron Klubfelder.
My name is Ron Klubfelder. I've lived here in Los Angeles for 42 years. I've just recently retired in January after working 41 years for the city of Los Angeles in some way or another. The last 12 years, I was the superintendent of Light and Power, and the reason I'm running is I feel like I need to give back to the people that supported me. I currently am on the Arkansas River Power Association Board as their vice president. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, this is Charles.
Chuck?
You can just say it.
I'm Charles Shue. I've lived in Los Angeles for 32 years now, raised our family here. We've had two restaurants here. We have one downtown, Mel's Kitchen, and then they built Dairy Queen across the street from us, and we are going to try to compete with that, so we smartly shut it down. Now, we currently have LA Cafe. Most people around town know me as the guy that does the karaoke. I like to volunteer my time. I'm a guitar player. When I'm not busy at the cafe or doing my wifely chores and stuff like that she wants me to do, then I do a lot of volunteering time with my music. I've got seven wonderful grandkids, two great-grandkids, and the reason I'm running is Los Angeles is hungry for a change, and we're kind of stuck in a rut right now. And I think I... I don't think I know I have the leadership experience to lead us where Los Angeles needs and what I feel wants to go. I believe in input from everybody. You have nine people sitting up here, but it's you people that run the city, so that's what I want to bring to it, is to get more input from everybody else and run it like we all want to run. Thank you.
My name is Scott Peterson. In 1965, I almost broke my arm and nose over in the old gymnasium in the middle school on a fast break, and I didn't know the wall was this far behind the basket. It was a good trick, but anyway, I was born on the Air Force Base in New Mexico, down in Roswell, which is just south of here. My dad was in the Air Force. We traveled all around the world, and of all things, toward the end of my career, I was blessed with being hired at the Air Force Academy to develop three buildings on the academy grounds. And there's nothing that makes me more proud than to meet military people who have survived the rules and regulations of the military. I came to this town to play golf and to marry this woman up here in the front row who was in my class, but she would never date me in high school. We both went to Lamar, but I didn't measure up at that time. We've been married three and a half years, and I've been on council two and a half years. Interesting walking in here. I saw Dave Armstrong, and Dave Armstrong was a mayor pro tem when he sponsored me to be appointed as the mayor. So I didn't get a chance to say hi to him, but that started it, and then my first term for election, I was unopposed. And today I have these two gentlemen running, and we'll see what happens. My overriding mission is to bring my financial and development background to this city, and we've been pretty happy with our CDOC Downtown Grant, Downtown Sidewalk Grant, our second CDOC grant, and this is all adding up to be $6 or $7 million of free money, effectively free money. And we're going to continue that whether I'm here or not, but with that, development, jobs, and assessed valuation, those are my big things: jobs, housing, assessed valuation, to make this community stronger from the inside out. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for the audience to ask questions of the...
Yeah, Pam, about this. My question to the City Council and the mayor is that I have a business in Los Angeles. I am right now kind of retired, but I have paid taxes in the town. I have a building in town, property in town, pay taxes, city taxes, and have no voice to vote for any one of you that are here. And is there something that can be changed for that? If people have property in Los Angeles, if people have businesses but still live in the county, do we still have representation?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next question?
Somebody can answer?
Answer from all... Any of the candidates would like to answer back to us? Go ahead.
So Pam, I've talked to you about this before, and I'm not sure, but I believe an ordinance could be passed so that maybe you can't actually vote on the ballot, but you could come in. No matter what, anybody is allowed to come to City Council and speak for up to three minutes and voice your concerns, so I would recommend everybody do that, especially if they have a business in town. But we could talk to the city attorney and see if there's a possible way to have an ordinance, just so you guys could, you know, throw your name in the hat for what you need to have done. So I would completely support that for sure, because you guys do a lot for the city.
Any more people? Any of the other candidates would like to respond to or question? Okay. Next question, please.
Ward Martin, I also live in the county, and I can't vote, but I'm concerned about the budget. I'm always concerned about the budget because I used to run the nursing home, so I didn't hear a whole lot of talk about experience with budgets, and I'd like to hear from each one of you, if you don't mind, starting with the mayor, current mayor.
Mayor?
We have a budget hearing coming up, I think, in about 10 days, comparing last year's budget with this year's budget. There are some complications in there that I'm concerned about. Frankly, the general and administrative expenses of hourly workers, who got a very nice raise, and what that has meant to our neighbors in Lahunta, who have had the same issue, and they're voting for a 1% sales tax. And if they have threatened that if they don't pass it, they're going to close the golf course, the senior citizen, the library, and the swimming pool. We don't want to be in that position. I don't want to be in that position. But anyway, we have a public hearing coming up in about a week, I think, to compare last year's budget to this year's.
Can you just address how we're doing with the budget?
No. It's not a public hearing. It's just a work session.
Anybody can come to any meeting they want.
Right. It's a work session on the 24th.
Go ahead, Barb.
How are we doing with the current year budget? Are you saying we're over-budgeted?
I didn't say that.
No. How is this year's budget figuring out what you had budgeted for? How is this year running to the way the budget... How much you budgeted was her question.
Ask Ron. He's a department head.
He's no longer. I can speak on.
Yes, go ahead.
So as far as our budget goes, on the 24th, we'll be having a work session on it, but we are not over-budgeted on anything. We've fallen right within the lines of our budget that was set up, so the city is looking really good as far as the budget goes.
All right. I have a question from the back.
Carrie Beal DeFries.
Wait a minute. Excuse me. Barb?
I didn't hear from anybody else on budget.
Does anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry.
Budget experience.
Any budget experience?
Sure. I'll talk on it. I don't have a budget experience to the extent of a whole city. I have a budget experience with what I do in Corrections. I currently run a budget for our incentive program for offenders. My budget's roughly around $30,000 a year. This budget involves creating events for them, creating food sales, and creating hospitality programs to teach inmates how to be more effective in society and all that. So I do that on a daily basis, but not to that extent. I understand how a budget works very well. It'd just be something we'd have to... I certainly have to look into, right? Because we haven't seen the budget. Once we actually see it, then we could probably expand more, but right now, it's just a matter of getting it out there so we can see it, like they were talking earlier, transparency. I think a little more transparency would help a lot of this, get a more comfortable budget.
Anybody else would like to respond to it? Go ahead.
Okay. Whenever I worked for the Light and Power as a superintendent, I put together the budget for Light and Power, and that was a $4 million budget, and we always came under budget.
Any more to respond?
Do have to get up. It sounds like you're concerned with the budget, but just like Lynette said, we're not over-budgeted on anything, and for the first time in a long time, Los Angeles has a really good reserve, so we're sitting pretty well for Los Angeles right now with our budget. As far as experience, I have a $1.2 million budget with the three Starbucks in this area, and we're never over-budgeted for that either. We're sitting pretty well for this area.
I don't have the experience of also of doing the city budget that big. I did time in the military, and I was the commander of a local unit here for the Civil Air Patrol, and it's an official auxiliary of the United States Air Force. I was in charge of that for four years in Lahunta for the Lahunta Hawks, and I had the budget, scheduled training, and everything that was needed to keep that squadron going. So I had the experience and know-how, just don't know the numbers for the city.
Okay. Anybody else would like to respond? Young lady, you're next.
I was the director of a CDS, so I had to keep everything budgeted and what was going on there. I also did daycare for a while, so money in, money out, you know how that goes. I've run my own business a couple times. Just wasn't... Did I went downhill? It just wasn't something that was needed in the area, so I closed it down. So yeah, I have... But nothing on the scale of the city, but I have had some budgeting.
Any other candidates would like to respond? Thank you.
I'd just like to end up in the city.
Please identify yourself.
I'm Carrie Beal DeFries. Moved back to Los Angeles, was born and raised here and came back after 40 years. I'm asking you, where do you officially host public announcements that your constituents and the people of this city need to know? And by that, I mean anything that would affect, you know, light, power, that. I went to the web, so I'd like to know straight up, what's your official way to communicate? Where do you post? Your calendar? Where do you... Where do you let people know what's going on in the city to include the budget per se? Would be nice to see those quarterly reports. I didn't see... I saw a various sparse webpage, so what other... What's your official form of communicating with the city people, with your townspeople? What do you use? What are your forms of communication? What do you use to get out the word?
They are on Facebook.
Facebook.
Under City of Los Angeles, that's where all the City Council meetings are always... They're always live feed through there every second Tuesday, and so they are on Facebook.
All right. Well, that's your official form. That's what you're going with.
Well, no, that's not the official form. The website.
We have our website, and we also use... We signed up with the Democrat, so anytime we have announcements or jobs, they're placed in the Democrat, they're placed on our website, and then local meetings.
Your budget reports are posted to the Democrat?
I'm not sure.
Your annuals at least, or your quarterly, where do you post those?
I think most of that is just on our website.
On Facebook?
No, the city website.
On the internet, your own, the city...
The city website.
...website. Okay. All right. Is the mayor uses that and does the form as well? I'm just... I don't hear. I'm looking for information from the council, from the mayor, from the city, besides the mail, but besides the bill that's sent 20 months later. And if I need to go to Facebook, by all means, I will, but since we're a government municipality, there should be an official means to communicate with all your townspeople that we can reach out to you besides just power outage and stuff. That's what it is, and I know it's just I don't know. If you'll just tell me where you're doing that, I'll go there and I'll get it to me.
Yes.
I'm pulling up the City of Los Angeles website right now, and if you go to public notices under 2023, you'll see your...
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
So I have the City of Los Angeles website on my phone right here right now, and if you go under public notices, under 2023, you will see the public notice, public hearing notice, a proposed budget, and so that's where you'll find documents.
And that's updated like early or monthly? Because when I was there, I looked. I don't do it often, because when I first looked, there wasn't even three to. So I just, you know, I was trying to... And I am not a Facebook user, but it seems that's where all the notices get put. So I wanted to hear it from the mayor or the council itself, if that's... They were not getting any government website.
About, you know, to the public in our city?
Cassandra is a current City Council member.
I'm a current kind of help out with information here, because I don't want you to feel like...
I'll keep going there. I don't know, like if there's a... Like we upload every person a month, or is it, you know, like an update time or...
So I think that anything that needs to be posted publicly would be posted. We've got two people who work in City Hall. Their names are Charmaine and Richard, and they are on top of it. And if you're ever curious, go ahead.
With that, services, when they start to do stuff on the roads, you know, city roads, they would... Because I always look for information there, and I couldn't find that.
So when you're talking about...
Just steel and roadwork.
You know, like if they're going to have your road blocked off for a few days or so, or... You know, like, if they're going to have your roll off out for a few days or so, or heads up that way, or?
I'm not seeing that here on the public notices.
And I don't want to confuse public announcements, because that's a legality, you know, you have to legally post those, versus maybe community information, in the sense of heads up, we're putting out the roll off, you guys need that, that would be a great thing, you know, it's not an alien ship landing, we just want you to throw trash in there, it's all good, don't get concerned.
You do bring up a good point.
As a matter of where I need to go, I will go there. That's Facebook, I was concerned about the Facebook, because it's, it's a government entity, please, you know, say on social platforms for official public announcement, make sure it's your own, that's all.
So just to clarify between the two, anything that would be required under Sunshine House to be posted would be on the city website? Announcements like what's being chip sealed or being worked on, you usually try and get it, well, the city usually tries to get it onto the city Facebook page, because that's not an official government announcement. But we have talked about it in the past, about being more informative and having more communication with the, with the town in terms of where are we working, what are we doing, and how long it's taking. So that has been a discussion in past council meetings, but I don't want to take over this conversation.
And I wish that I had the most city government ever at one place, I thought I pulled that question, so I'd make sure I heard the official answer.
Thank you. Public Works has to, they haven't done it, but they need to get on the website and put where they are working and what Public Works is doing to keep the people informed in Los Angeles. And that's what you're looking for, is any information from any of the elected officials or officials that are working for the, for the city, there should be information provided on their website.
And you can, and on the website, all of our phone numbers and emails are listed, so you can call a council member anytime.
Okay, we answer your question. All right, next question? Go ahead.
Part on the budget type thing.
Stand up, please.
I'm Doug Rick, and I have a business here in town. I live, actually live in the county, but I don't shop any in the city. I've asked a lot of people, 50 questions on where all the weed money, tax money is at, and I've got about 50 different answers, so I would like to know if you guys are going to clarify that and let the public know where all that money is, and also if we can take some of that money and buy some decent equipment to repair some of these streets instead of throwing, throwing asphalt down with the backhoe and a load.
Okay, this question is, the main question you want to know is what happened to the money or sales tax from the marijuana sales, and what, and I believe, do you have any information, Mr. Mayor, or any of you, of what's happened to that, where that money is?
Andrew wants.
Yes, thank you.
That's a big chunk, too.
It is, it's over a million dollars, we haven't even touched it, we haven't, it's a, that's what I was talking about when Los Angeles has a great reserve, and they haven't in a long time. In the last five years since the legalization, we've had it in a reserve account, we haven't touched it. We agree with you completely, the roads can be fixed here, but that's, that's, I mean, we were just talking about it, that's more of a 15, 20-year.
Plan.
Plan, then it's not something that's going to happen overnight. We used to have a chip and seal contract for a long time, we don't have that anymore, and so we're trying to fix the roads, it's just, that's going to take a lot more work and a lot more effort, so right now, it's untouched, right now, it's a great reserve.
You hope it's in an interest-bearing account at least.
Yeah, where, where is it at?
It's in La Junta.
It's my understanding you can't put it in a bank. Am I right?
No, there's definitely banks you can use. We use several different banks. The Colorado Bank and Trust is one of them, but I mean, there's several different banks that, last Wednesday, another law just passed where we can use cards now, debit cards, so the laws are getting a lot more lenient, a lot more flexible for the state of Colorado in a way, but we use several banks.
Thank you for answering that question, I'm glad I finally got a straight answer.
I was curious about it too when I first got on the council.
I'm sorry, I missed how much money you said, did you say how much money there is?
The last time Charmaine and I talked, there was one, I know it's over a million dollars, it was 1.3, 1.2, I know it's over a million dollars.
I asked Charmaine about it probably two months ago, and it was 1.38 million.
Well, there you go, see, there's a little bit up there.
38.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions on, related to Doug's, Doug's questions? Anybody else wants to respond? Okay, next question, please.
I probably don't need the mic, but I'll take it anyway. Just go throw it out.
My name is Charles Johnson Kelly, I'm a pastor here in town. My question for anybody who would like to answer it is, understanding that the problems that Los Angeles faces are many and complex, and they're not problems that can be solved overnight. With that disclaimer, what are one or two issues that you are concerned about, and how do your experience and your skills, how do you plan on bringing those to bear on solving those issues?
Charles?
One thing I want to see, I would like to see done in Los Angeles is bringing back our police force. It's been talked about and talked about, and that's all that's happened, has been talked about. I have crunched some numbers, I have talked with the chief of police in Lamar, and most recently, the chief of police in Rocky Ford, and since he's the newest police department in our area to start up. It's not cheap, and I, I have asked other city officials, and, and I was told that it could take up to eight years to get a police department going. Well, I sat down, I, I put a budget together just for our police department, and for about $30,000 to $40,000 more than what we're paying the current sheriff's department right now, we could have a city police department for, for a year right there. Now, that doesn't include all expenses, but that includes a chief of police and an administrative and four deputies. Okay, you've still got more expenses on top of that, which I've looked into, and some of the marijuana money can be used for law enforcement, so that would, that would go towards like vehicles and body cams and guns and stuff like that, so. We got this money out there, we need to use it.
Are you talking about doing away with the sheriff's department?
No, they'll have to away with the sheriff's.
No, you can't.
Can you afford to pay the city employee that didn't pay now?
We have, currently, we, they supply one officer 24 hours a day in the city limits of Los Angeles.
Well, LA and Grenada don't have any, they have La Junta.
Right.
That'd be La Junta, nobody.
So with a police department, what is, how is that going to make any difference than what we already have going on right now? The sheriff's officers are already out, they're already doing everything.
Well, well, they're, they're out, but they're, I, I sat down with, for four hours a couple of weeks ago and, and talked about a lot of this stuff, and we haven't had very many municipal tickets written in a long time. And it says it's because of the, the municipal judges that we have. Well, we need to have an understanding with those judges, you know, that this is our bread and butter, this, this is our bread and butter, and this is what we need to do.
There is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You were saying that the sheriff's department is very active in the city? I had my house broken into, I had a bunch of stuff stolen, and I'm still waiting to hear from them.
Yeah, but crime's going to be here no matter what.
Well, I understand.
Whether it's a police department or a sheriff's office, crime is going to be in the city no matter what. You have drug dealers, you have people that are out doing whatever, homeless people, you have all of that stuff going on. We're a small town, it's going to happen no matter what.
Correct.
It doesn't matter whether you bring a police department back or whether you have a sheriff's office.
The sheriff's office does not patrol that often in the city. If they set a Highway 50 going out of town or coming into town during school hours, they could write 100 tickets. Goes through there at 35, when the lights flash and says 25, but they're, they're too busy, I don't know what they do, but I, I'm, I'm still waiting to get the report so I can send it to my insurance company. And every time I call, well, we're working on it. And when I ask, I told you who did this, their response is, the district attorney has to approve all arrest warrants. Now, when I was a deputy in town, we called the, the, one of our judges in town and go get it signed and go arrest the person. But right now, there, there's a moratorium on arresting people because the jails are full. One of the reasons is, we had those escapees, so they had to redo the whole jail over again. And they were farmed out to Washington County, and the sheriff's department and the county, and also the city has to pay to house them there. So, you know, because they wanted...
Yeah, because in the 25 years that we had that sheriff's department or that jail, no maintenance was done on it, none. There was never, any of the commissioners would not approve money to go into that jail. I was one of the people that was working over there. I was one of the people that had been over there doing the remodels on that jail.
Okay, thank you.
As Rocky said, that is a big problem.
Yes, it is. Go ahead, Barbara?
All the candidates to ask, or to answer Pastor Kelly's question, because so far, just one candidate has the goals that they would have specifically.
Goals that they would like to achieve while they're elected officials.
Do you want to restate it, Charles?
I'd be happy to, did everybody forget my question?
Yes.
My, uh, my question was, if you can name one or two concerns that you have for the city, and how your experience and skills can be brought to address those concerns?
Anybody? Well, I can start off if you want me to. Can I say something?
Sure.
My pet peeve is, is the main streets through Los Angeles. They have not been cleaned in years, and running a street sweeper during the edges of it, they don't get to it. In other words, the dirt has built up over 20, 25-year period. I have lived in Los Angeles for 49 and a half years. This is the worst I've ever seen the streets in Los Angeles. And on the other night, I was at a meeting, and a person had gone through here to Los Angeles, and said, oh, and I told him where I was from, he said, oh, you're in an economically depressed area. So that's the image that we're putting out to people, that we are a poor people, because the corridor through Los Angeles should have all the dirt out of the streets, be kept clean. And the other question I had also is, I approached the urban renewal story, yes, I was on city council, and the information I proposed is, why can't we put banners up advertising the town, the town of Los Angeles businesses? Shop Los Angeles, there'd be one for Trojan Cafe, another one for Donkel Storage, another one for, you know, there'd be signs all the way down the line to make their trip through to get them to see what is in Los Angeles and what's happening. That's my pet peeve. You got it.
All right, I don't need the mic either. So my biggest pet peeve is Public Works. I can say from the minute I moved here, I have an issue with a lot with what they do. I can see that the, the want to do it is there, but the training and the ability is not. When I moved to this town, I live on Sixth and V Hill, the big three-story brick house right behind the curve on the highway. When I first moved there, they chip sealed the roads, and then they came by with a strip sweeper and pushed a ton and a half of gravel into the gutters for me. I had to contact the mayor directly because Public Works didn't want to help, and they had to come out and shovel all that out. They just recently chip sealed our roads again and did the same thing again. They chip seal them, then they come by, and then they street sweep, and they take all of that.
I've been with you for two years.
They take all that chip sealing that they put down, and they push it right into the gutters, so the gutters don't work. The problem is clearly a lack of training and a lack of good equipment. What he said with the budget, if it's there, we need to work on it, absolutely, it's a huge problem.
I'll take anything.
The big word that nobody likes is audit. I think Public Works probably needs to be audited on what their abilities are and what their budget is and how it's working. I think it's a huge issue. We're putting Band-Aids on bullet holes, you can't chip seal a road forever. As you can see, the roads in this town have turned into big mountains, because we just keep chip sealing them over and over and over again. There needs to come to a point where we decide that instead of chip sealing five miles of road, we fix two miles of road correctly, instead of always just putting bandages all the way out. That's one of those things where I am not afraid to ask the questions why. It's always been my thing, I want to know why. If they don't have a good reason, then I need to find somebody who does have a good reason. So Public Works is going to be my one area that I really want to focus on, because I don't see them doing the correct thing.
Okay, thank you.
I, I agree with the Public Works situation. I see them working, and I only see one person, and that's Ernie Marfield. He's always doing something. The other guys, the last time I was in the shop asking a question, there was three guys standing there, working on a street sweeper, and they were just standing there, and I says, is it ready? And they said, we lost the spring. So the three guys, instead of looking for it, they were just standing there. So, I mean, that is, that is a problem, is that, you know, they, they have their jobs, and then you see a city employee go to the convenience store to buy scratch tickets in a city vehicle, and then he goes back to work, you know? That's a, a problem there, too.
But what are we going to do about it?
Well, I plan, I plan on putting my foot down, if I can, you know, that, I want to look into that, you know, why? You know, he's got his own vehicle, why doesn't he drive? You know, or, you know, I, I don't...
He drives that vehicle all the time.
I don't, I don't hold that against him, if they're on their lunch hour and they use the vehicle to go home and eat, and on the way back, they stop to get something to drink and buy a ticket, but to make a special trip to buy tickets, no, it's not right.
Okay, so I'd like to address just a couple of these random things that are thrown out there. First of all, we did just force all the city employees to have decals put on their trucks, so now you know where they are at all times, we know if they're taking trucks home, or if the trucks are staying where they're supposed to be, because before, we couldn't do that. So we just made that happen. As far as the streets not being cleaned downtown for 24 years, the tech committee hand scraped and cleaned the gutters downtown two years ago and had it sparkling. We have a lot of wind, it doesn't last very long. It is true, we need a better system to clean it, but there were six people out scrubbing, we hauled off four trailers of dirt and crap from the streets.
Does the city of Los Angeles consist more just downtown?
Correct. As chip sealing, the plan is to no longer do chip sealing, this should be, our last year did chip seal, they are developing a plan, which Andrew was saying, it'll be 10 to 20 years of a plan, but the new plan is pavement, ripping things down to the core and paving correctly. We paid for a program, two of our city Public Works employees have been taking classes, we also did an inventory, we made them bring an inventory in of every single piece of equipment we have, are selling off the poor equipment that doesn't work, and we are starting to buy correct equipment to do the correct job instead of the chip seals. So hopefully, chip seal is a thing of the past, but this is not a quick solution. We have a lot of streets, we have a lot of dirt buildup, and it's going to take a long time. They will start with the streets that all the, the underground work has already been done, those will be the first streets to get ripped apart, and as soon as that moves on, as soon as they finish all the under stuff, we'll keep on going, but it's going to be a long time, but we, we have been working on this. This has been a big, huge thing for us, along with the blight houses and trying to take care of houses that need to be abated and tore down in town, so we've been doing a lot, a lot of work to try to make the town look nicer and be better for all of us. It's just not an easy process.
Greg, Greg, go ahead.
Greg Gardner, I was just going to ask, has anybody done the price of what it would cost to do a block of paving on a street? Because I've seen La Junta's done some, there's a couple of members on the council that they do, call to see what it costs.
Yeah, we just don't have the equipment, we don't, we're not, we're not Otero County, so we have to rent theirs, so we, we have ours, like she said, we're going to finish out this year of that contract, and then we're going to reach out, and, and that's exactly what is going to happen, it's going to, like you said, instead of five blocks, we're going to do two quality... It's going to, like you said, instead of five blocks, we're going to do two quality, you know, start with, uh, the schools, start with downtown, start with the high-traffic areas, and work your way out.
Okay. Now, just curious, anybody know what asphalt was costing for a block for a hundred years?
Crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy price, but we have, we bought a new program that now Geo maps all of the, the streets, so it'll start telling in order which streets are the worst, which ones we can start with. So it's a starting point, but it's a long process. But there's a, we, we have a starting-
Yes, Barbara?
Uh, I'd like to get back to Barbara, where we're having the rest of the candidates all come in on their couple of pet peeves and for-
Go ahead.
And can I add, it's nice to hear about pet peeves, but what skills do you have to fix those problems? That's what I want to hear, because we can all bitch, we can all complain, but what are the solutions that we have and can bring forth? Because I would like to see a council, I'm done with council, but I would like to see a council that doesn't just sit there and complain, and point fingers at each other and say, "Do better." You need to come up with solutions and be part of that solution, and make things happen, make that change happen. And that didn't happen because I sat down and said, "Someone needs to, someone needs to paint these houses. You have to work on it." So, please, I'm getting very frustrated in this corner. Please, tell me your solutions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to comment? Go ahead. Yes, you can.
Um, I heard somebody mention earlier that we need more, uh, businesses, more jobs in Los Anamos, and I completely agree with that. Um, you said as far as skills, that's what I want, to try and help out. Anybody that tries to bring a business here, I want to try and lend a hand. And we don't have somebody sitting in Benton County Development right now, so that's who helped me get my first business going, and that's not even in existence right now. So, anybody that needs help, I'm more than willing to lend a hand. I have four businesses. I actually just started a new one yesterday. Certificate of good standing right here, but that's, um, I'm willing to use any skills or any knowledge that I have to help anybody else bring a business or anything to Los Anamos. I think, um, we definitely have the places and space for it. We just need the people willing to work and open these businesses.
Can I ask what business is coming in?
Coming in?
Yeah, what is, what is the business that you are-
This is, um, it's going to be called Lola's Airbnb. It's an LLC. There's two locations, one downtown and one on San Fran, and there's going to be two Airbnbs, because we don't have any lodging in Los Anamos.
That's right, yeah.
That's right.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I don't want to talk, I can talk without that. I'm like Andrew, uh, again, I think businesses, we need more restaurants. Three options in the town is just not, not down in the ones that are here, but driving to Lamar and Lahana on a night that, after I've worked all day, I don't want to cook, I don't want to drive twenty, thirty minutes just to go get food and turn around and come home. You know, that's why you live in a small community, is you have places to go. And, so I would like to see some more restaurants. I'm like Andrew. I will do whatever I can. You know, I know there's been a couple places that have tried to come in and weren't, get in touch with them, see if they still want to come back. Just try and find some people to come in and bring some more businesses in here. Businesses aren't only, there's jobs and it's tax revenue for the city.
So what's y'all's opinion on, if a new business wants to come in, why don't we give them a break on utility fees and water fees?
I think that would be a great idea.
I totally agree with that.
What if you're all, you're thinking about-
At, at this point right now, the city charges seven-hundred-dollar deposit for a new business to open a business, which is ridiculous. Anybody coming in and starting, it's kind of like a slap in the face, like you're not going to make it, so we're going to charge you a whole bunch of money. I believe the city needs to be way more business-friendly and do exactly what you're saying. Give a, a cut on something. We do not charge for business licenses in the city. However, all of those utility bills and everything are so stacked up for a new business to start, it's, it's very, very hard. You have to come in with a lot of money. So I agree with you. It'd be a great step if we cut that back.
Any more comments? Yes, Greg.
Greg Gardner, uh, for everybody up here, I know that the city had land here lately. We've got forty acres just west of Sinclair. They purchased just north of my house. They're trying to purchase south of my house. They're trying to, they purchased right across the street from Hatton Spur. What's your take on purchasing land? Is the city a landowner or?
No, we're, uh, sorry, that's-
Go ahead.
Uh, they're purchasing the land because we have a big, we have a huge grant with GOCO, uh, Great Outdoors Colorado, I don't know. Uh, GOCO is the grant, but, um, it's, it's more than just one thing. Buy your house because the pond is right there, the walking course is right there, the baseball field's right there, the golf course is right there. So Sonny Smith has been working his tail off to try and incorporate all of that into one GOCO grant to try and involve everything. And that walking path that kind of goes right by your white fence right there, that, uh, brings everything together to use it all under one GOCO grant. So, I don't think their whole purpose is, uh, owning land. I think it's trying to take care of, uh, I mean, we, uh, Sonny already got the, getting up the grant going. We're going to, um, irrigate that, that pond right there, and it's going to have a pier right there. That's the first thing that's going to happen, is the pond, but it's going to incorporate everything. And that's why they're taking up so much land.
Excuse me, can, can, Charles, if I answer your-
Accountability, like I was saying about the, the guys going to, you know, it's, they have to be held accountable for their, you know, for how they present themselves when they're in public, with the city employees.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I would just like to say, I, I think it's wonderful that, I mean, obviously, we're all here because we care about this community, we care about this town. Uh, but a lot of the questions I'm hearing are, are really fantastic questions for a city council meeting.
I agree.
But, but I'm here tonight because I don't know these people, and I want to hear what they have to say about why I should vote for them. And I'm not hearing much of that. And that's why I'm here. I could be at home putting my daughter to bed, instead of sitting in what should be a city council meeting. Let's hear from these guys about why we should vote for them.
Yes. That's why I want to know if we're, if the city wants to be property owner.
No, the city does not want to be property owners.
So, I get that everything's being put over there by the golf course. What revenue is that going to bring in?
It'll, it'll be bringing space for the community to use, is the main thing. GOCO will pay for almost all of it, um, so it'll be a, a whole bunch of new things for the community to do and people to come to, and hopefully attractions to bring other people into town.
Okay, and what about the forty acres by Sinclair?
The forty acres, that was, uh, before my time. I still don't understand what that was purchased for, so-
From my understanding, first, that was county property, and they wanted something different that the city had, so they traded. And, uh, Jess Garcia and I, I asked if we could lease it to run cattle out there. And of course, the city attorney says, "No, it's in the city limits." I says, "Yeah, but it'll be fire mitigation, you know, the cows will eat all that, all those weeds," but they still said no. But I don't know what they're going to use it for, other than, uh-
Okay. Yeah, that's my question. If the, the, you sitting up there, if you were interested in buying more land and doing that, or if you, uh-
Good question. So, absolutely not. I don't know why we keep buying land. Um, an issue that I honestly had was these signs put downtown, right? We've done a ton of work to this little area and let everything around it go. I don't know why we put big metal signs up to say it's Los Anamos. We all know it's Los Anamos. Everybody that drives through knows it's Los Anamos. Why are we letting sidewalks fall apart? Um, like I said, I like to ask questions why. Um, in the Department of Corrections, I hold a seat on the Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, we have to develop a plan and a, a goals for our facility based on state standards. Uh, we're held to those quarterly, that we have to keep those up. So that's something that I have done on a regular basis, is ask those questions why, hold those standards, develop a plan to make sure those standards are staying online. And it's more than asking questions. It's allocating and finding who's good at what. Right now, that's not happening. Right now, we're trying to make downtown look great, but we haven't done anything for anything else. Right? They said, "Yeah, we own land," but nobody knows why, because nobody's asked why. It's just there. Um, the, the area over there, they're trying to make it look better and nicer, but the problem that everybody's upset about is why did we let it go in the first place? When for two years, we've had a million, three-hundred-thousand dollars sitting in a bank? Why did we wait till it was falling apart to fix it? I think the problem is, is we're fixing the wrong things right now. Um, and it's, 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 the hard question's why. You got to ask why, you got to figure out who was in charge of it, and then you got to break it down into how we can fix it in small groups. If you just say, "We need to fix this whole area," it's never going to happen. If you start breaking it down to, "We need to fix this part, and this part, and this part," other than downtown, it's always focused on downtown in this town. There's way more of this town than downtown. Instead of those metal signs, we probably should have fixed the, the wagon wheel sign as we've come into town that's falling apart and dilapidated. That's the, that's the sign everybody sees coming into town. We don't need another Los Anamos sign as they come in. So we just need to break it down and allocate those funds properly, and make sure the people in charge of it are being held accountable and trained to do that.
And that's why you're running.
Yes.
Downtown grant that specified only particular things could be used. So when they give out free money for the downtown, we apply for it so that we can fix it, because that's the money that's being given for free to fix up. So that's how the signs came about, and that's how downtown improvements have come about, is because the state of Colorado gives out money to spruce up your downtown. That's where that money came from.
Does Los Anamos have a grant writer?
No.
Is that somebody that has a skill on that that's running tonight?
I have written grants. You don't? I've, I've pushed and pushed for an employee to be hired for that particular position, because that would make great use out of city funds. Haven't you written grants?
Couldn't have been fixed that by that grant?
No, because that's out of downtown.
We have a real small downtown radius. It's like two blocks.
The nail on the head.
And so we had to-
I wrote the grants for these downtown projects. They were strictly for rejuvenation of downtown. And that's a political decision. The Colorado Department of Transportation, which is our governor and the legislature, they don't want this money going out into suburban areas. They want it to fix up downtown so you can stabilize the tax base. If you all could understand how horrible the buildings are between the old JCPenney and the old Furniture Company, any of you want to go in there and look at those, I'll give you a tour. It's horrible. We sold the, we sold the, uh, JCPenney building to somebody, and the title was messed up when the county gave it to us, so we had to go back to court. They gave us twenty-five thousand. After we paid legal fees, we get eighteen. Uh, it's just, the, the overriding problems with redevelopment in downtown, and the state knows that, and they're throwing money at it to try to help us get our way through it. Period. I mean, it's the way it is on Main Street in Lamar. It's the way it is in, uh, Highway Fifty and Main Street in Lahana. It's the way it is in Pueblo. I worked in Pueblo for twenty years. We went through all this stuff. And we ended up with a convention center, uh, the Historic Arkansas River Project, uh, redevelopment of the university's land into Walking Stick Golf Course. You, you know, these downtown projects take a lot of effort. And that's what the, that's what the economists and the politicians want. Stabilize downtown. People will stay here. They won't move away. They'll stay here and spend money here. Otherwise, there's every reason in the world to leave. With all the abandoned homes and the history of our assessed valuation, a lot of reasons to go. We're trying to raise, make reasons for people to stay and spend money in the town. That's one of the highlights of the golf course project, that, uh, we started with the reconstruction of the clubhouse, so that people would come to town, in that case, to play golf and spend a night in a hotel. At that time, there was a hotel out there, and, 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 uh, spend money in the restaurants and the bars and the grocery store. Uh, we're almost there. We're starting to book some pretty good businesses in there. Uh, but that's an example. It's not downtown, but it's an example where the city's invested money to try to rejuvenate an old city-county asset, which is an old golf course, basically, uh, that used to be a dairy farm. And it was probably flooded in the sixty-five flood until they built the levees. But these downtown grants are tricky. They take a lot, a lot of efforts. Uh, if you want to hire a grant writer, go over to Lamar to the SECED. They have one. They're paying her a hundred thousand a year, I think. To do what? To throw the fishing pole out there and try to fish for the same grants? We get all the grant leads we can get. Uh, the GOCO stuff that was mentioned earlier, Sonny has worked his tail off for outdoors recreation, uh, walkways, bicycle paths, the baseball field, the fishing pond, you name it. And his angle is, if we can fix those things up, those would be other reasons for people to stay, to stay in town, and invest in their home, in their schools. But there, there's no question, we've got right now on the books, uh, four-point-five million for downtown. And we haven't started figuring out what we're going to do with the second two-and-a-half million. I think I'm going to, if I'm around, I'll, uh, point a, a committee of council people and some others that are interested, and say, "All right, here's, here's the grant that we got." And I, and it'll go through all the things that I applied for that the state approved for. And you, you look at that and, and decide, uh, do, do we want to buy some, do we want to buy that old blue building there at Sixth and Carson? Tear it down and try to do something new there? I don't know. Uh, there's no shortage of projects in this town for economic development. The shortage is money. The money without raising your taxes. That's the trick. If you guys want to vote tax all the time, then go ahead and do what Lahana's doing. Raise your taxes. But they've got Walmart, they have a hospital, they have a junior college. Oh, by the way, Walmart in Lamar has the same thing. Lamar has Walmart, a hospital, and a junior college. And they take all of our sales tax that we all spend when we go there, buy gas and food and whatever at Walmart. And we're stuck in the middle. I mean, yeah, we've got, uh, we've got the Fort Lion out here, and we've got Core Civic, and we got a golf course, and we have a wonderful school. But what are we doing to attract some real money in here? Real money. We tried to get Cambria to put a hotel over there by the old Sugar Beet Factory. Uh, Sonny worked on that too. They were going to build a, a Cambria Hotel, just like the one that they just finished in Lamar. But they needed a million dollars of local equity investment to get that thing off the ground, and our local banks and rich guys in town said, "No way." So they left town. They went back to South Dakota. Uh, we've got that motel out there at the corner. I don't know what's going on with that. It's been vacant, and they've had a couple of contracts on it. It's not in the city limits, but that's, that's terrible that we can't have that up and going for pheasant hunting, goose hunting, duck hunting, when all these people like to come down here. It's a good hotel. I used to go there. I used to spend nights when I traveled through. But, uh, that's an example. It's too bad we can't take this state grant and get that off the dime and bring a developer in to make that work. It's hard to get a developer to put up his own money. That's the last thing they want to do. Put up somebody else's money. But the forty-two acres down here by Sinclair, uh, I'm on the Housing Authority Board. We showed that to the executive director and a couple of our board members about two weeks ago. I said, "This would be perfect for affordable housing, forty-two acres." It was partially designed, uh, at one time with water and drainage and stuff like that. Unfortunately, or whatever in the wisdom of city council, council voted not to have anything to do with affordable housing with Prop 123. We're not going to do any of it, because it's going to be a waste of our time. Well, could be. Could be it was a waste of our time to do the employee housing project over here behind Memorial School. We've got a hundred and, what, a hundred and forty thousand in it? Something like that? Seventeen of the units are, are rented up. We have a lot of money in it. We had a developer. It was the developers were few and far between to get that thing off the ground.
What, what kind of housing is that called? You call that behind Memorial?
I can't hear you.
What kind of housing did you call that behind Memorial that was just built? I'm sorry, you called it, what kind of housing?
Affordable.
Affordable housing. We're not doing that. Lahana is, and Lamar is. It's three-hundred-million dollars that the state has set aside for affordable housing.
So, so the question is, what, what is the housing behind Memorial? What, you, you, you used the term, and she's asking what the term was.
Affordable.
No, municipal or something like that.
You called it employee housing, maybe?
It's designed, it was marketed as employee housing.
Oh, employee housing.
City employee?
Not affordable.
It was supposed to be for CoreCivic.
So I actually went through there and that's where I looked to get signatures because I live right there. Everybody who lives in those houses works for CoreCivic. All of them. Every single one of them from out of town, none of them were registered to vote, not a single one were registered to vote in our county. So they are just not involved at all. Unfortunately, our city relies a lot on CoreCivic, but CoreCivic's a very poorly run company. So a lot of those employees go straight from CoreCivic to Wardway, to the state, where it's run a little bit better, but not much, but a little bit. I think the biggest thing that he's saying that we need to do is, you're right, the funds aren't appropriated right, they're not allocated right, but we need to do what the state's doing and I think we need to look at getting a grant writer. Grants are super important, more than just downtown grants, again, just always focusing on downtown. We might have to do something like giving incentives, like a move-in bonus or cash on the spot to get somebody who's a good grant writer here. Because grant writing is not throwing a fishing pole out and getting a bite. A good grant writer gets grants.
But I would appreciate y'all calling that free money, because that's not free money. Really money you get from the government, whether it be above us, beside us, or from a foundation, is not free. Somebody, some entity, some agency, some organization, some people put that money out there. And if it's grant money and federal grant money, those things should be posted, what's happening to the money? Where does it go? What happened to the rec money for marijuana? I'm sure you had a five-year plan when you asked the city, the townspeople to pass it. It's a good tax, sitting on a million. Are you at your five-year plan with that? But it's been five years since you legalized here in the city. Where are we at with that?
Nothing, I just did something. Let's go on, Doug, you had a question?
I do have questions for our two mayoral candidates that are sitting kind of quiet over there. What specifically are your goals as mayor to make Los Ananas better? Can you express?
Well? Go ahead. I, like I said, I was a superintendent of that car, so I can be a leader. Going back to his question, what's one of my pet peeves? Dogs running loose. That is hindering people's safety. I think my communication with Jake, I think that is a good start. But we need the safety for our people.
Any other people like to talk?
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I want to talk specifically, so our code enforcement officer makes about $27 an hour higher than Lahuna's. As I offered at the last city council, for some reason we have a very antagonistic relationship with city council. I don't want that. I'd like to ask, who wants to work with us? I mean, a police department, I would love to see one, do I think it's realistic or possible? No. It's gonna cost a triple. Yeah. Oh, I'm Sheriff Jake Six, sorry, for those who don't know me. So my question is, is on the dogs. Code enforcement in every other county is ran by the dog catcher and code enforcement, it's ran by one person. Why are we looking at paying a code enforcement officer more than a post-certified deputy? The highest-paid post-certified deputy in southeast Colorado does not make as much code enforcement here. Not certified, convicted felon, literally this person should not be a cop, but he acts as one for the city of Los Ananas.
Did you say he's a convicted felon?
Yes, ma'am, I did. The city of Los Ananas does not do background checks to be employed there. So this is what we're paying for code enforcement who refuses to catch dogs. Why then do you put it on the sheriff's office? Because a convicted felon who can't carry a gun refuses to do dogs? How is that active or managing a business at all? That's my question.
Thank you.
You know what my question is? I'm sorry. I'm Marcy Peterson. And my question is, it's really wonderful that all y'all are here tonight. But where are you when it's city council meetings? Because my husband comes home from city council meetings and he's very frustrated. Because there are things he wants to do. But it can't get done unless city council says it can get done. So he can stand there and blow bubbles, but, you know, I mean, city council is the one who makes it happen or not happen. So no matter what his plans might have been that have not come to fruition, or plans that have. You know, it all comes from city council and the great ideas that he has had. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anybody actually running?
So Jake, what you said is absolutely right. It's holding people accountable, right? We haven't at all. We've been allowing it to get by and there's multiple people in the city that are absolutely pissed off at code enforcement in every aspect. Whether it be people's yards, whether it be cars, whether it be the dogs.
Me too.
Whether it be the fire.
Well, I really, really, I can say good things about him.
Nobody was held accountable for it.
He did everything I asked him to do. Get the weed out of that freaking lot across my street. He did it, every time, by himself.
One thing we need to work on, like again, I keep saying, you gotta ask why and you gotta find the transparency. We, this city does not communicate to the people at all what's going on, it's terrible.
Well, we do go to the meetings all the time.
Facebook doesn't work good enough, there's gotta be a better option, they're right, but the Los Ananas website is terrible. It's old, it doesn't work.
Well, just Facebook, that's a social media platform, that shouldn't, government entities shouldn't be doing official business. You can use it to talk to people, but it shouldn't be your official.
The word audit needs to come into play. People need to be held accountable for how much they're making, what they're doing, what their job title is, how they're even qualified for. An absolutely background check should be an issue. How can you enforce the law when you yourself break the law? It makes no sense. Other than the fact that I grew up here and I love this town and I want to fix it, I have developed skills over the last 12 years of being in corrections, of being assertive, some might even call it. And I don't quite worry about as much as what people think about me as I do as fixing issues. If it makes people upset that I fix issues, that's how it has to be. Sometimes people like it, sometimes don't. I'm not afraid of asking why and fixing issues if it ruffles somebody's feathers. That's what I want to do. Go ahead.
Oh, next. My name's Anthony Montoya. If you vote for me, that's cool. Either way, I'm gonna keep doing exactly what I'm doing, I'm gonna keep representing Los Ananas, I'm gonna keep running softball tournaments, and I'm gonna show up at every city council meeting regardless of what side you want me to sit on. So I'm gonna keep doing exactly what I'm doing, but if you did show up to the city council meeting, most of your questions would be answered, like the grant one, Charmaine talked about that, if you just view the meetings or come to them, pretty much all that is answered. Like Lynette said, everything's posted, when we get it, when we know about it. But, oh, I, I don't know, if you vote for me, I'm just gonna keep doing the exact same thing, if not, I'm just gonna still be at the city council meeting sitting on the other side.
I'm Richard and I just want to see changes happen. I want to see businesses come in, bring in jobs, bring in tax revenue for the city. I want to make things as best as I can. I know I can't change anything overnight, but I want to see this community become a community again. It's, everybody is on their own thing and they don't, nobody works together anymore and there needs to be more togetherness for everybody to get along, transparency, work on everything so that we all can have a better city to live in.
I'm Maria Medina. I'm trying to get on, I haven't been on the city council or anything like that. I know what I want done in the city, like, you know, the streets and the alleys and the weeds and all that stuff and all I can do is keep bringing it up. I can't fix things, you know, it takes a group to do that, the whole board. So, you know, I'm just interested in doing this and that's all I got to say.
My name's Lynette Wolf and like I said before, I am not from Los Ananas, I have been here for three years. The moment that I went to the first city council meeting, I knew that I had to stop just sitting at home being an artist and I had to step my foot into it and open my mouth. They don't always like what I say, I make them stay later for meetings, I ask questions nobody wants to answer, and I'm not gonna stop asking those questions. Whether I'm voted for or not, I will continue to do that. I will also continue to support the community and do everything I can to do activities and things to bring people back and closer together. Community is important, we can't figure out what you guys want if you don't come and tell us. So like I said before, give us a call, email us, I'm happy to come talk to anybody about anything and try to get the work done. So I'd like to be re-elected so I can continue to go. I think in the last two years, I have made, maybe not a huge difference, but I've started to make a difference and I don't want to stop now.
Is it on? I'm Rocky Oquintanilla, aka Rocky. I've lived here for 40-plus years. My wife and I decided to live here because it was between her folks and my folks. And now it's home. Watch it to vote for me if you're in my district, but I'm running on a post, all I need is one vote. And it's already in, okay? I voted for myself, I'm not gonna lie. But the thing is, is on the south side, you hardly ever see any work done over there. And when they do work, they never do it, you know, when they dig out a fire hydrant and they replace it, they never cover it, I mean, they cover it, but they don't smooth out. My neighbor keeps, I mow her yard and, you know, you can't use a riding mower because you get stuck, so, you know, push mowers I do around the hydrant. And then everything else I do a riding mower. But I would like to see a little bit more of things done in the south side. One of the people that I talked to over there said that when it rains, because they put in a new water line or sewer line and they put too high of a crown, all the water almost goes into their house. So, you know, that needs to be corrected. I don't know how, but I'm gonna look into it. And like I said, vote for Rocky and I'll put a chicken in everybody's pot, but I'll have to steal the chickens. They don't let me have them in town.
Okay, Ron Pop filler again. Like I opened this up, I had a 41-year career working for the city, so that's longevity. I would invite everybody, even you that live out in the county, come in, attend the city council meetings. When you're there, the council would be at your service. This is our community, everybody's community. Let's make it better for the next generation. That's why I need your vote. Thank you.
Charles, you've been, I want you to vote for me because I believe in community involvement. Okay, everybody sitting up here, we're not the answer to all the problems in Los Ananas. With you, you're the voice of what really needs to be done in Los Ananas. And that's what I want to do, is I want to set up something where you have questions, you can go directly to someone who will find your answers, okay? I don't give up, I will find an answer. You might not like that answer. And no, nobody's gonna be happy all the time. But we're gonna do what's better for Los Ananas and the safety of the citizens of Los Ananas. And I hope you vote for me, thank you.
I think tonight you all have received an invitation to come to our city council meetings because we have a section of public input. And if we get one person showing up and saying something, that's pretty unusual. It takes a lot of guts to show up and be on Facebook and up at the microphone in front of all your friends, but that's what's gonna have to happen. These are good points. But we haven't heard them at the city council level. Bring them to city council, there's plenty of capacity to listen to reasonable people on what they'd like to see done. After all, you guys, it's your city, we're your servants. As far as me personally, there's Dave. Dave reminds me, reminded me of the time he was mayor pro temp after Jim Collins retired. And he got a couple of votes for me to become mayor on the basis of finance and economics. With my background in finance and economics, with the number of banks and insurance companies and others, I'm thrilled that we have done what we could do downtown, we're gonna do it more, we're gonna go after Farmers Home Administration. I had such good luck with Farmers Home, doing rural development, water and sewer, even hospitals. So there's plenty of opportunity for us to find more state and federal money. I'm not gonna be one to say, let's raise your taxes. I'm not that kind of a guy. That doesn't do you any good, doesn't do me any, especially if we can find a way to do it another way. And I'll leave you with the story. Colorado State University at Pueblo had about 150 acres there just north of the campus. And they said, what do you want to do with it? And I was the financial advisor to the city and said, it'd be perfect for a golf course. We went to the State Board of Agriculture, they said, we'll give you the land if the city will sponsor a golf course. It's called Walking Stick. It's been paid off by years, a long time ago. But there was no vote, no taxes, and no debt. Well, the most unusual arrangements, that you could spend $10 million and there was no vote, no debt, and no taxes. That's because the revenues from the golf course paid back. So that's an example, what could happen here or there, if you bring these opportunities to us. You've asked me to comment on our vote on the ballot issues?
Yes.
The two ballot issues that I'm familiar with with the city is to, or are to, remove the city clerk and the treasurer from the voting requirements that you currently see. Have them be appointed by city council. For me, that doesn't bother me at all because no one votes for them anyway. They're always unopposed. The other one is a little more tricky, it's state referendum, I think it's called HH. I'm ready to vote no on it myself because I was a big supporter of Tabor getting excess state monies rebated back to people. These people in the legislature said, well, why don't we get in there and take that state revenue back and we'll spend it the way we want? Not give the money back to the homeowners and taxpayers and families, which is what Tabor does. So I'm laying my card on the table, which is, I'm voting no. I like the refunds going to the people of excess money when the state government brings in more money than they spend. So thank you for the time, thank you for the rest of the candidates, and thank you Chuck for helping us.
On the agenda, so you get more than three minutes. The public speaking is a three-minute time, but you can get on the agenda and bring something forward and have more time and have us discuss it.
Okay, anything else? I do have one concern I didn't, I should have brought up. In other words, I know we do not have disposable employees. Do we? No life is disposable. Anyway, what I'm getting to is our maintenance department needs to wear safety equipment so you can see them. Vests, they need to wear them all the time. They don't do it, they said it gets in their way. Well, buy them a shirt that's fluorescent so they can see. I don't know if the sheriff's department can ticket them for working out there with the improper clothing on or whatever, or the city buys stuff for them, but buy it so that we can see the employees that are working out there. I'll stop there. Any more discussion with this? I'm gonna say thank you for coming, hope this helps you out. Thank you.